So we're going to start in a minute, just a few house rules, pagers, cell phones, any devices that make noise, if you turn them to stun, it would be appreciated. If you are any, any, if you are other than the applicant and would like to speak on a matter either on the agenda or not on the agenda, we ask that you fill out a green card, which is available in the outer room. We will be starting promptly at 7:30. And I think that's all we need for now. Thank you. I'm going to call to order the Thursday, May 17th, 2012, meeting of the Planning Commission. Roll call shows, all commissioners with the exception of Mr. Moison are present and accounted for. Anybody who would like to speak, make public comments on items not on the agenda, this is your opportunity. Any takers? Going once, twice, sold. Okay. On our consent calendar, we have the Planning Commission minutes of May 3rd, 2012. Any changes or corrections to those minutes?
Yeah, I had a couple things.
Okay.
Let's see. It was, I think it was myself, rather than Commissioner Gennade, that reported that the Architecture and Site Review Committee meeting was canceled. And just a little nit, but the apostrophe in the name Bruins should be after the S, not before the S.
Okay. Aye before E, except after C. Do I hear a motion?
I move that we accept the Planning Commission minutes of April 19th, 2012.
Second.
With the changes as proposed?
Yes, sir.
All right. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All, motion made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Passes six, nothing. First item on our public hearing is NDO 6, NDU P 05, 10 SD 01, 475 El Camino Real. Can we have a staff report, please? Oh, and I'm going to, just so people know, the process for this evening, we are, for a variety of reasons, going to take a break at, certainly at nine o'clock, and because of, I want to set expectations that if, our hope and expectation is we will cover this item this evening, but if we arrive at the witching hour of 11 o'clock, we will, I will poll my fellow commissioners, and if necessary, and we are in agreement, we will continue the matter. That's not our objective here, but it is in the best interests of both the applicant and the community and the commissioners that we don't go to the wee hours of the morning. Can we have a staff report, please, David?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioner. This is a mixed-use commercial development at the Garden Supply property at 4750 El Camino. The property contains the Garden Supply site, as well as the Marie Callender's Restaurant and the Vitamin Shop. The site's about almost five acres. What this project would do is remove the Garden Supply and restaurant businesses and keep the retail vitamin store, and divide the property in half. The rear half would contain 38 two-story residential townhome units, access to Sherwood Avenue. And the front half would contain 167 apartment units that would be subdivided, however, and approximately almost 7,000 square feet of new retail area. The vitamin store would remain and has been incorporated into the project. The front half of the project is the mixed use, with the commercial retail development at the front, access from El Camino. There's a central motor court leading to parking, both behind the vitamin store and for some of the commercial businesses located in that courtyard, namely a fitness use that would benefit the apartments, as well as open to the public. And then there is a parking lot that is accessed from that motor court underneath the mixed use building, that provides all the required parking for the residential and commercial uses. The townhome development, as I said, is accessed from Sherwood Avenue by one driveway that circumscribes the site. Each of those 38 units has their own two-car garage, and this, in terms of zoning, the townhome development at the back meets all the regulations, except for the rear yard setback. The rear yard setback adjacent to the properties along Chester Circle is proposed at 12 and a half feet, where the code requires 25. They're asking for this as a development incentive. This part of the project is providing four below-market rate units, and that setback relief would allow them to locate two of the project's units in that setback area. The staff is supporting that. There is a landscape plan that buffers those units from the adjacent single-family residences to the rear. The front half of the project, as I said, meets the parking regulations. It also meets the height regulations of 45 feet. The project is three and four stories tall. It differs from our front yard setback of 20 feet, where, it's providing 20 feet, rather, where 25 feet is required under our code. We're supporting this setback exception because it relates very well to the vitamin store that would remain, and helps facilitate, otherwise, the retail development property with allowing the parking behind it. There is a side yard setback on the wester, excuse me, the easterly edge, adjacent to the Los Altos Square multiple-family residences. There's a 40-foot setback there, and it ranges, the proposed setback ranges from 10 to 26 feet, but that's to the balconies and the, excuse me, the base of the, the main part of the building is beyond that. There is a generous setback area in that buffer zone that we think meets the intent of the required screening that would be required in that 40-foot setback, and we're looking at this as a minor encroachment. There's also what I would refer to as a technical setback relationship issue between both developments. The front half of the site is zoned commercial thoroughfare, the back half is zoned multiple-family residential. When the commercial thoroughfare backs up to a multiple-family residential, it's required to have certain setbacks, and this project would encroach upon those, and we think it's reasonable because this really is one project, while it's two different building types, it's one site, and there's a generous setback area, and road separating the two, and so we think the intent of the code is maintained there. And any effects of it would really affect their own project, so we don't really see that as a big issue. In terms of sort of going up to a higher level, this property is within the Sherwood Gateway specific plan. The specific plan for this area calls out for residential development at the back, although it's zoned for 38 units an acre. The specific plan limits it to 16 units an acre in two-story development, and that was done to really tone down the development in the back as it relates to the adjacent single-family and multiple-family uses. And the 38 units on the back meets that 16-unit acre limitation, as well as the two-story limit. The residual density is transferred to the front, and helps them achieve the 167 apartments that are provided up there. And the general plan designation for the front half is commercial thoroughfare. The project is relying on density bonuses that are allowed under the state code. The front half of the project is providing 17 below-market rate units, 16 of which are designated at the very low, one of which is designated at the low. And I should point out, there is a typo in my staff report. I apologize. On condition nine says 17, and then uses the numerals 16. It should read 16. So condition number nine is referencing 16 below-market rate units in the very low-income level. There's one low-income in condition 10, and then condition eight designates the four townhome units at moderate.
So it's 17 or 16, David?
Pardon me?
It's 17 or 16?
It's 16.
16.
So condition nine should read 16. The specific plan for this site calls out for substantial retail development and mixed use, and/or mixed use at the front, and, which could include lodging at the higher end of the development, and certainly a mix of retail and residences, but it could also include offices, although they're not proposing that. This project was reviewed with a study session with council some time ago. There is some concern that the initial concepts weren't developing enough of the site as retail, and that the retail development should come back about 200 feet on the site, which is the basic, specific plan requirement, and that there should be no net loss of sales tax. The plan's been substantially redesigned since then, and to increase not only the number of housing units, but the amount of retail development. And staff has looked at this, this concern about the loss of sales tax. This property was, the Garden Supply is a very high sales tax generator for the city. So we did an economic analysis, which is in your staff report, and really, what we found was that this was actually a real good fit, because in terms of revenue, which is consistent over time, this project will produce about 20 to 40 percent more revenue than the, than the existing land use in terms of property tax. So property tax waxes and wanes over time, whereas the property, the sales tax comes and goes, the property tax is fairly consistent. And that combined with just the challenges of developing a site like this, we haven't, there hasn't been a lot of big-box retail developed in the area. We've looked at sort of the diminishing returns on that in terms of sales tax potential and property tax revenue, and we don't think there's a great increase if we were to require a big-box development here. It is a large site, and that's really the opportunity and the main question of this project. From the staff perspective is whether it's meeting the specific plan goals for the retail development of the site. We think it is, and we detailed that economic analysis in the report. And I should mention, our Economic Development Coordinator, Kathy Kleinbaum, is here, and certainly is available to answer any questions about that analysis. This project, in terms of nuts and bolts, is a design review application. It's a, it's a use permit, and design review application was heard by the Architectural Committee a couple of times, and, three, in fact, and it's been changed substantially to meet their direction. There's a use permit involved for the mixed-use component, allowing this type of residences and commercial development together. There's also a subdivision application, and that really, it subdivides all of the residential units and the commercial area into discrete parts, although the developer's intention is to provide these units as rental units. And so there would be a subdivision that would follow with this project, but they would be holding them in common ownership. So there, in terms of development applications, the use permit, design review, and subdivision are all within the context of the environmental review. And what we have here is a negative, mitigated negative declaration. This, this project results, in some cases, in fewer trips in terms of commercial versus the residential, but it changes the modality of the trips. There's, there's trips now coming onto Sherwood that weren't there before. And then the residential trips generate a certain type of traffic that wasn't there before, namely school traffic. And so the traffic report has looked at that, at the distribution of trips, the effects at Sherwood and San Antonio, and all the major intersections in the area. Not only has this traffic report been vetted three times by our staff with the various versions of this project, but the Traffic Commission has, has received this traffic study and concurred with its, with its conclusions. There are some effects at the Sherwood and San Antonio intersection. We are suggesting that the developer pay a fair share to make up for that, and do some hard development as part of, the Traffic Commission recommended some side, crosswalk improvements at that intersection to increase the safety of people going to the school and crossing San Antonio. And so the staff import on that was a condition of approval, where the developer would set aside $100,000 for traffic calming improvements for that area. That's the main mitigation. There are also other mitigations that, in the environmental review, that control dust and noise and particulate matter, both from the, the effects of constructing the project, but also from the residents, the occupants using the project and receiving pollution from El Camino Real, for example. We are recommending adoption of that negative, mitigated negative declaration. So in summary, this is a, staff is recommending approval of the design review, use permit, and subdivision applications, and, and also is recommending approval of that mitigated negative declaration. So it's a lot of information, and I know you have my report, and I'm certainly available for any questions.
Any questions for David?
Did the Traffic Commission prepare something for us to review? I didn't recall seeing that.
The, the Traffic Commission prepared a set of minutes that, our attachment E in the staff report, that's about a quarter inch down.
Two.
And so those are their, their summary minutes, and, and they had some recommendations in terms of maintaining the site visibility at the driveways, which the project maintains. They, they had concerns about that, in addition to the crosswalk improvements on San Antonio.
Questions?
Yeah. Yeah, I do. Could you summarize, you handed us on the diocese, a letter you received from Caltrans as well as VTA. Could you summarize what they're calling attention to?
Thank you. I neglected to mention that we received two late letters. Not late, but in our process, we're nearing the end of the environmental, environmental review period. There's a 30-day review period on a project like this, and so the VTA has submitted a letter that, and they've, they've been involved, both Caltrans and VTA have sent letters, and they've been involved in the initial plans of the project and traffic reports. And so their, their response is to, of course, the latest ones. The VTA, their, their only concern really was that, that this project provide a 12-foot sidewalk across El Camino. It's envisioned to be a highly pedestrian area, and this project provides that. So we think that concern is satisfied there. And the Department of Transportation has a technical question about some of the tables in the, in the analysis, and I think the traffic engineer is here tonight, and will be able to speak with that.
Okay. And David, are we going to get a separate report from the traffic engineer, or how are we going to proceed on that?
I think the applicant here is, is going to give you a presentation on both from the mixed-use development side and the townhouse side, and then the traffic engineer is standing ready, but if requested, they certainly can give a report.
Okay. Jenny?
My other, my other question actually does deal with the traffic, because there seems to be an inconsistency, and I just want to make sure we know which one we're supposed to be referring to. Your staff report and the EIR.
Negative deck.
Right, the negative deck. Both say that, that the project would generate a gross increase of 1,686 daily trips. However, the engineering report from Hexagon says it will generate 1,686, not an increase of. So I guess I want to make sure that what we're talking about is an absolute number versus an increase over something, because the increase over something doesn't make sense.
I, I think what, what there is, is, I think a mistake on my part in terms of the increase of, the project generates 1,686 trips a day, but when we give credit for the existing land use, it drops down to 959 trips.
Okay, but the, the language in the staff report and in the negative deck, I think, needs to line.
Thank you.
Needs to align with what it is generating, and drop the word increase. And then you caught the typo in terms of the 16 versus the 17 in the conditions. There's a typo just in 15, and we'll talk about it afterwards. And then also in number 27, if we can make sure that the, the dollar figure actually reads correctly there. And again, I have a question on number 27. 27, just so everyone else knows, is talks about the traffic calming improvements and the $100,000. Instead of a comma, it's a decimal point that was erroneously put in there. But I guess my question on the wording is, at this point in time, we really, I mean, it's implied that where we thought we were going to do some traffic calming mitigation steps at Laux and San Antonio, we're now moving those over to Sherwood. And I'm wondering whether or not this condition should really be as explicit about whether it's that intersection or the other versus saying that the necessary, you know, changes will occur. It's, it's speculation right now, which intersection, correct?
It, it is, but there's been a lot of staff work in the, in the years since we've developed that specific plan, and I think I've maybe taken some liberties here with the condition. Originally, the traffic, the signal was proposed for Laux, and we looked at that, is it Laux or Sherwood? And, and we looked at Laux and found that it's really too close to this El Camino intersection, and it's difficult to, to maintain a proper traffic flow there with the traffic signals so close. And so we, we then were focusing on whether we should do it at Sherwood. And right now, the, the warrants aren't meant to put a signal in. Cumulatively, in, say, 2030, there probably will be enough traffic to justify putting a signal in there. So the city staff's perspective is that that's really where it should go. It's, would be the best in terms of traffic engineering. We've since improved the Laux intersection with some enhanced paving, the crosswalk and the flashers. And so it's, it's our view, the staff view, that we should be putting this effort up there at Sherwood, where this project is going to.
Yeah, my only concern, again, is it's kind of an assumption of close versus saying, you know, it'll be dependent upon, you know, the analysis that is done to most appropriately mitigate the situation.
So with this condition, I mean, a lion's share of that condition would, would cover the Sherwood crosswalk improvements that we're seeking there. So I mean, I don't have a problem if we want to broaden it to, to include Laux, for example, for the remainder of the area.
Okay. All right. We're all set. I'd like to give the applicant an opportunity to make a presentation. Historically, I've given the applicant closer to 20 minutes than 10, but the city attorney has threatened to break my other leg if I give the applicant more than 10 minutes and a five-minute rebuttal. But at the end of 10 minutes, if my fellow commissioners feel that additional time is warranted, we can do so. And I realize that's asking a lot of you, because it's a very complicated project.
Yeah. Well, I have been informed that there's actually two applicants, so each applicant will get 10 minutes.
Oh, good.
Yes.
Okay. So I'm going to change that. You get 10 minutes and five-minute rebuttal, and the second applicant gets 10 minutes and five-minute rebuttal.
Okay.
And I, and my other leg stays intact.
Well, you know, knowing me, I think you realize that, I mean, I can barely say hello in 10 minutes, so the 20 minutes will be much appreciated. Actually, I'm not going to talk very much, I'm Jeff Warmuth. I'm just going to introduce, we've got a collaborative group here that's going to be developing this piece of property together. The front portion is going to be developed by the Saris Regis Group of Northern California. We're going to give a chance for Jeff Smith from Saris Regis to tell you a little bit about who they are and what their vision is. And then the bulk of our presentation will be Alex Sedell, who's the architect on the front mixed-use portion. I think he is the one you probably want to hear the most from. That's, it has been the focus of our prior A&amp;S hearings, and also the substantial work we've done with staff, has been on that very important El Camino frontage and the very important mixed-use portion. The back half of the property is being, is going to be developed by Lennar. The, Doug Rich is here from Lennar, and he will be presenting a little bit about that project, but that portion, we, the better thing probably is to be available to answer questions versus to do a long presentation about the, the lower-density portion of the project. We have our full team here. We have civil engineer, we have landscape architect, we have Gary Black from Hexagon, who did the traffic study. So any, we should be able to, between the team, handle any question that you want to pose to us. I will just point out a couple quick things. That VTA letter, as you probably read, is actually a very supportive letter, and if, to the overall idea of this sort of, the development along the El Camino Real. As you're all aware, you know, the, a lot of the cities along the peninsula are very supportive of the Grand Boulevard Initiative, and this project is fully in, in compliance with those goals of the Grand Boulevard Initiative, in addition to being a great place to live in Los Altos, and providing a, a kind of a new type of housing that isn't, isn't currently available in Los Altos. The other thing is, is from a traffic mitigation standpoint, I think a really important thing to talk about is, David uses the word catalyst to talk about what this project hopefully can do for Sherwood Gateway. I sat on the Planning Commission in 1994 when the specific plan was approved, and really, this is the first project, you know, first real substantial land use that's being redeveloped in the area. One of the things we're doing with the, with the access to Sherwood, which you can thank your A&amp;S for their guidance in getting us to Sherwood, is there is a, going to be a connection point sidewalk, a nice safe way to access from San Antonio Road to El Camino, which will be a benefit for that overall area, be benefit for this part of, of town, because right now, you know, there isn't really a lot of safe ways along San Antonio Road because of the, of the commercial businesses there, and there's never been a safe way going through Sherwood, the Sherwood Triangle area. So we're hoping that, one, the substantial investment and improvement of this area, but also, two, some of the improvements we're doing will serve as a catalyst to hopefully spur some additional private redevelopment of the Sherwood Triangle area. And so with that, again, we're going to be here to answer questions, but I'll introduce Jeff Smith from Saris Regis.
All right. Thank you, Jeff, and thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity to present our development tonight. Again, my name is Jeff Smith with the Saris Regis Group of Northern California, and I would first like to just give you a brief overview of our company. We are a local real estate development company with an office in San Mateo, and our principles of the company have been developing and building the highest-quality communities in the Bay Area for over 30 years.
Hey, Jeff.
Yes?
Why don't you click in the, in your lower-left corner, click on the presentation?
Sure.
Go up.
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 No, no, no.
Back down.
Back down, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
You demand that.
That's why Ken has a PhD.
All right. So let me just figure out where I was. Specializing in infill development of all product types, Saris Regis has a strong background in multifamily and mixed-use projects. We are a smart-growth pioneer. In fact, I can point out three projects along El Camino Real alone that we have developed. First, to the south, Trellis Square in Sunnyvale, when our partners led the development efforts at Prometheus. Second, just a mile north of the site, Montage in Palo Alto, which was actually my first proj- project with Saris Regis. And finally, further north, in San Bruno, a 20-acre development effort which included almost 1,000 units. We also have vast experience in mixed-use projects, including the Crossing San Bruno, Bay Street in Emeryville, the Pilgrim Triton Master Plan in Foster City that's currently under construction, and also a new proposed development in Pleasanton. Collaboration, as Jeff mentioned, is key, and we have a strong tradition in working together with cities, neighbors, other developers, and also property owners to build successful, award-winning communities. Our firm has a pipeline of over 2,000 units in the Bay Area currently, and we have over 440 units under construction. Saris Regis also manages our own properties, as well as properties for others, totaling over 14,000 units in the Western United States. And we really have a passion for creating and operating special places and homes. Saris Regis is committed to sustainability on all our projects, and we've prepared a preliminary sustainability statement for our proposed development. This will include LEED certification, a building envelope that's 15% above Title 24, Energy Star kitchen appliances, CRI green-label plus carpeting, engineered lumber, electric car charging stations, which I know is very exciting, low VOC caulking adhesives and paints, and a really neat bicycle storage and onsite bicycle repair station. Saris Regis has a sustainability resume, including a number of sustainable communities meeting Greenpoint rated, LEED rating, Energy Star shell standards, as well as we have LEED AP professionals within our company. And finally, Saris Regis is committed to implementing and maintaining these practices that are socially and environmentally conscious while operating more efficient, competitive, and valuable real estate on the property management side. And to this extent, we have developed a sustainable manual. We have an environmental preservation policy. We use Energy Star portfolio software. We offer training and classes to our residents and also our employees. And we have also created SRG Green Living Blog, so if you'd like to go see that, it's at green.srgliving.com. So tonight, in conjunction with our co-developer, Lennar, we would like to present our proposed development to the commission. The revitalization of this 4.93-acre site will be a catalyst to the Sherwood Gateway specific plan area. As described on the front, 2.57 acres, Saris Regis proposes to develop Colonnade, a high-quality, sustainable, mixed-use community consisting of 167 luxury residential apartment homes and over 17,000 square feet of ground-floor commercial and retail spaces. The resident component of the mixed-use community includes one- and two-bedroom rental homes between 630 and 1,175 square feet, 17 of which, as described, would be offered at below-market rents.
Is that 17 or is that 16?
Okay, I'll just wrap it up really quickly. I'll just point out some of the Colonnade amenities that Alex, our architect, will go through. As David is described in the staff report, community benefits are numerous, and I've included two slides here that are also part of the staff report. As you well know, a major investment in revitalization of this area, and a lot of great stuff, including, you know, maintaining Los Altos' high standard for aesthetic quality materials, quality design. So, again, the development received unanimous approval at Traffic Commission and also at A&amp;S. Along the way, as David and Jeff mentioned, we've been a very collaborative effort between the city and also the neighbors, which we can answer questions. Tonight, what we really do is ask for your support and approval. And with that, again, sorry for the, moving through this quickly, but I'd like to introduce Alex Sidell with Sidell Architects, and again, we've got all of our other consultants here for any questions that might cut them off. Thank you.
And we're going to, Alex is going to talk about both projects and the interconnectivity, and so if we can yield some of our time to Alex and not cut him off when we get to the, we'll stay within the total time.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, commissioners. Alex Sidell, I'll try to be brief, but get to the highlights of the project. It's been a very interesting project to be involved in. It's an interesting site. I feel like we've had a really collaborative, productive relationship with the A&amp;S committee here. To my right, you can see the character of the project as it fronts El Camino. We've tried to develop the character specifically with the Grand Boulevard Initiative in mind, and the mixed, highlight the mixed-use attribute of it, a very active area with terraces in front of the new retail, could have cafes. The center of the project is a lane that opens, brings you into the project, and then, of course, the Vitamin Store on the left. We first engaged in a real dialogue about how to have a strong architectural expression on the higher-density portion, and then later in our process, we examined a series of ways to upgrade the Vitamin Store and marry it to the new portions, so we feel that we really have an appropriate frontage. Before I move off the slide that's probably on your monitors and is up on the wall, I think one aspect of the project that personally excites me is the idea that we're able to bring something into the midst of the city that I'm going to say actually perforates the block and provides new routes of travel, both for vehicles, but particularly for pedestrians. And so, for instance, there's a new access off of Sherwood, and there's a central access through the high-density portion of the site that'll be accessible to pedestrians during business hours, and there's other routes around the perimeter down towards the Whole Foods sides, again, creating connectivity for the project. A close-up, you can see the lane coming into the center of the project. We developed this auto and pedestrian courtyard as an arrival point. It's kind of a mixing box. There's retail parking there. There's more retail parking at that level, and then that connects to a ramp to two levels of below-grade parking that are under the entire podium. There's a second courtyard behind that that's a residential courtyard that's developed with many amenities for the residents, outdoor eating and cooking, seating areas, a fountain and so forth. And then again, the connection back to the Lennar site at the back of the site. Let me back up on that. I'm going to go over to the boards here. And I'm going to run out of time in just a second, so I can continue? Okay, thank you. Yeah, great. Here's the courtyard arrival point, and this actually, this facade, which is basically the center, the heart of the project, is a real arrival point. It's the front door for the residential, and it's developed with this arch so that the residential lobbies are off on either side. And in a way, I want to say, we really built the whole project around that point coming forward and going back into the project. This is the board I'm looking for.
Alex, if you can bring, while you're describing, maybe bring him a little closer for us, over 40 who...
Over here? Yeah, Jeff, if you could hold that closer, thank you.
Could you point me for the drawing, please, Sonny?
This is an important, it's a transverse elevation, so this is perpendicular to El Camino. So it gives you an idea of what the character of the space is as you enter into that central courtyard, and you can see that it's developed with retail along the side with the arched arcade in front and trellis in top. And then a tower element, which is somewhat of an identity feature for the project, and actually a late development in the plan that I might mention is that there's now going to be a terrace on the roof where that tower trellis is, so that'll be a resident amenity, another nice amenity for the project. There's a number of different pipes of development surrounding the project as you move back from El Camino. The sides of the project, north and south, express themselves somewhat differently. We wanted to break down the scale of the project and give it more of a residential character. I might call it somewhat of a townhouse character where it's modulated into individual units that have different color and different siding treatment and individual roof forms. Yeah, thank you, Jeff, so you can get a sense of what the project feels like from the adjacent properties, again, to the north and the south. Again, being conscious of the limitations of time, I guess, I feel like those are the highlights, and I'd probably, at this point, turn it over to Doug Rich, but I'll remain here for any questions that you might have during the evening, so.
Alex, could you, I know the answer, but maybe for the other commissioners, you might point out how cars access the underground parking. It's not totally obvious, I think, from the drawing.
I think I can use the pointer up here on the screen, if you guys can crane your necks a little bit. So here's the lane coming in, the auto court, there's a driveway entrance into retail parking on the north side, and then that gives access to a ramp that drops in that location behind the new retail. So, you know, one of the important aspects of the project is the parking is all hidden and out of sight.
And that parking is for residents only, it's not for retail?
Below, there is, there is an area...
No, 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 the underground.
The underground has, I think, approximately 40 spaces that are open for guests and retail as well, so the retail parking occurs at grade and in a small area of the lower garage. And it is connected by an exterior open-air stair and two elevators back up to the retail, so the access for the lower-level parking is really good as well as for the grade parking.
Alex, I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. From me and A&amp;S, I was rather vocal about the Vitamin Shop. I have to say that I applaud you in terms of what you've done to kind of reface the Vitamin Shop, so thank you for being very responsive on that. And the other thing I wanted to point out is, the way you guys have handled the ramp down below and all, it's just really well-done because it's so hidden, it's, you know, it's very nicely done as well.
But let's not take away from this time, so.
Just a little clarification.
Okay, question?
Yeah. The area that is marked garage is where you said is the retail parking, and then the area where there are actually the cars drawn, who's parking in that space?
Here, out here?
Yeah.
That's open parking, so that's available for guests, retail customers. There's also parking behind the Vitamin Store, about eight spaces, I think, in that location. Thank you. Doug Rich, Lennar?
I'm Doug Rich with Lennar Homes. Definitely appreciate working with staff, what's now been several years on this project and how it has evolved. I thought David did a fantastic job of the evolution of this, including the process through Architectural and Site Committee and the feedback that came there. And all that has sort of culminated together in this project today, which is something that we firmly believe will be a great tremendous asset to the community of Los Altos and the people who live there. We're definitely excited about the synergies between the two projects. You know, it's interesting, one of our goals from the outset, because you really have two diverse uses here with different objectives, was how do you integrate this without having them feel like two unique items? And so that required us to work together with one cohesive land plan, as opposed to approaching them as two separate groups, which is what, in fact, we did. And the result of that is a community where there is no bright line, there is no segregation between the two, they integrate together well to create a great place to live. Lennar will be developing the rear portion of the site, which are the 38 townhomes. The site plan for that was designed with a central walk theme and plaza. Down the middle of the site was really the crux and the starting point, which then integrated with the paths and the pedestrian access through the front of the site. From there, we layered on a simple circular drive around the community. The purpose of this was to create a softness and appeal to the community without harsh dead ends or tees or things that really, you know, took away from the overall natural and rustic feel of the community. It also created a very safe and clear access for homeowners as they came in and their guests and accessing through in emergency vehicles that are necessary for an integrated and mixed-use project that we have here. In addition to that, one of the other themes that we really focused on was the landscaping of the community as a whole. You'll see that it's heavily landscaped as we spent a lot of time, this is actually our third community now that we will be developing in Los Altos. You know, and as we looked at the aspects that really make Los Altos unique relative to both architecture and landscaping, we felt like we needed to incorporate those items into the project. And so it's heavily landscaped with special emphasis on boundaries, which require buffering from neighbors in order to soften any impacts. The boundaries on the residential side are heavily treed with also tall screening uses in between. And interestingly, too, one of the things we wanted to do, as mentioned, integrating the projects, the boundary between the mixed-use project and the townhomes incorporates a living wall-type concept that has breaks that really softens, as opposed to going a very harsh stone or masonry or other type unit there. It's actually emphasizing, complementing this lush landscaping feel throughout the community. On the building side, as we move now from sort of the site plan to the architecture, we've worked diligently with an architect for the high-quality design that we've done in the past of the city. If you drive around Los Altos, I mentioned, one of the things that stood out to us as developers, really from the get-go, was that the architecture through Los Altos is really what I call enduring. You look at that and that architecture, you don't drive down there like a lot of areas and cities we do where you say, wow, that was developed in the 80s, and wow, you can tell that was the 70s, and you can see facets, but it really is timeless enduring architecture. And for me, what that does is, it obviously creates that appeal, the maturation that you want with architecture, but also creates a sense of warmth with the buildings. And so we wanted, as we were designing the townhomes in the back, to really capture that similar appeal, that warmth. And the way that it's been done, from our point of view in Los Altos, and I'm sure you know better than I do as you've been here in approving that, is really through a strong integrated design on the architecture. It's not architecture that is chopped up with what I'll call, you know, architectural features or details that have been added ad hoc just to say, okay, we've added stone or we added this, but it's a real true integrated design that we have done with this architecture via the simplified roof forms, the integrated design, but we're still adding those natural rustic details that are required and are true components of high design, such as the stonework, the siding, the shake tile roofs, those types of things. So as we looked at and designed it, we sought to capture those things with the architecture and then added the finishing touches of good architecture with the upgraded entry doors and garage doors that really add to the overall appeal. With those, you know, we've utilized natural and sustainable materials, integrated these to really capture what we feel like truly represents Los Altos. We, as I mentioned, have spent a lot of time and appreciate the feedback and everything that has culminated in this project that we bring forth tonight, and appreciate your consideration with that. And with that, if you have any questions for myself or any of the other team, we are definitely available.
Thank you. Questions? Any applicant?
Not as yet.
Any of the applicants? I have some questions, traffic questions. Is Gary available? Hi.
Gary Black with Hexagon Transportation Consultants. We did the traffic studies, so.
So I, one basic question was, I was looking at the counts that were done, and I was surprised that the count numbers were from 2010. And was there, can you give me a little history on that?
Well, the project started before then, in terms of our involvement, and so we did those traffic counts at the start of the project, and so that's why they're from 2010.
Okay. Okay. And are those, are those traffic counts still appropriate?
In our business, we consider counts that are within two years to be still current counts.
Okay. And, I had another question on traffic, and I'm looking at my notes here. The, the numbers you'd used for school counts, were, those were, I understand from the report, that those came from the school district?
We got those from, from the, from the team. I didn't speak to the school district directly, so I understand they came from the school district. I didn't have that personal-
I was wondering if those are generic to Los Altos, or whether those are representative of other condominium and apartment projects specifically?
We would have to ask someone else from the team to, that had the communication with the school district about that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
So, how, what is the source, or how do we come up with what the credit calculation is in terms of saying that there, you know, credit of, what was it, like seven hundred and something?
The, the credit for the existing, what we call existing uses, which includes the restaurant and the nursery, we counted the traffic going in and out of the driveway to come up with those numbers.
Okay.
I know what my question was. San Antonio Center, what assumptions did you use in your analysis relative to the increase in traffic that would result from the reconstruction of that site? And did you factor in both what is now apparently Phase One, and there's now apparently a Phase Two of something like another three acres in the old Bevmo location?
I can, let's see, I can give you the number of trips, but that would be probably, without any context, that probably doesn't mean a whole lot. The report describes what was assumed for the, for the center, three hundred and twenty-five condominium units and a net increase of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand four hundred square feet of retail use.
And, and so that got factored into the, the revised, the increased count?
Yes, that did.
Okay. Other questions? All right, thank you. So, I'd like to open it up for public comment. I don't see any speaker cards.
Surprising.
Huh? I'm opening it. I'm opening it up. This is your, this is your opportunity, folks, if anybody wants to speak.
Okay.
I'm gonna close public comments. Sorry if I sound surprised. We rarely-
You're shocked.
-have projects where we don't have public speakers.
Too many in the audience.
So, that gives the applicant five minutes to rebut public comment, which you're welcome to do.
Can you use your five minutes?
You can use it any way you'd like to.
And why are we not surprised that Jeff is back?
Yeah. I have a rendition of a song, because I, I didn't make it on The Voice, and so, what I'd like to do is maybe try tonight to sing that. No. We, I'm hopeful that one of the reasons why, and by the way, this is, there were a few more people at our first A and S meeting, as those who sit on the A and S know. We have done a very substantial outreach to the neighborhood. We've worked very diligently with the Los Alta Square, and we continue to work with them. They represent our longest boundary, and they are our closest neighbor, so we've worked very diligently with them. We've tried to be very respectful of the Chester Circle neighborhood, especially after meeting so many of those neighbors at our first A and S meeting. I don't, the history is, you all probably know, that at one time, the project was designed with a access onto Chester Circle. And we were encouraged by the, by the Architectural and Site Committee to find another access point, which we, which we worked on and did. And, of course, then most, along Sherwood, most of those properties are, there are few residences, but most of those are commercial properties, and they're all zone-commercial. So, we've tried to do the outreach. We've, we've met a number of times, we've had neighborhood, we've offered the neighborhood to meet with us a couple of times, and we've had some detailed conversations with people. So, I'm hopeful that the sign that there's not people here to talk is that we've hopefully done a good job with our outreach. Is anybody, I've got all these people who didn't get to speak, does anybody feel compelled to say anything?
Yeah, I was gonna say, you each have five minutes rebuttal that if you want to use for just more-
Okay, we're good.
Landscaping, architect, you have more time.
No, we're good. If anyone has any further, any questions, specific questions, we'll be happy to answer.
We will ask.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I'm doing a shot.
Okay, so, so I'm, I'm gonna open it up for Commissioner Comment. Can you, wanted to make any comments initially?
Yeah, I'm the chair for A and S, and I just want to say that we have seen this, I think, three times, and spent a lot of time with the applicants on this project. And there was substantial public input during those meetings, including a large group of moderately irate Chester Circle folks. So, I think the public has had a fair shot at discussing this, and I think the applicants have really, at least from the perspective of A and S, have done a marvelous job of responding to all of the comments, both the public comments and the, and the Commissioner comments from A and S.
All right. And I just have a question for somebody, which is, is there a materials board?
Right there.
Can we pass that around?
Sorry.
Oh, yours up there.
It's two of them.
Okay, so, unless anybody else wants to spend huge amounts of time looking at material board. All right, so, on the left is, is the commons, and the right is the garden, am I correct?
What, what is the roof material on the townhouses, on the, rather, the condos?
The apartments.
The apartments. No, the condos. The condos, yeah. What is the roof material?
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's a tile. There's two samples here showing the variation.
So, and is that a composite?
It's a concrete tile.
Concrete tile, okay.
So, so it's meant to look like a shake roof, but it's really concrete tile?
I have a question about the garage door. The garage door image in that photo looks very different, or slightly different, than the garage images in all of these, in the plans.
Which one is the correct image?
Right.
That is the correct image.
Okay.
It's the same line, the window has an angle on this. Actually, it's the, it's the boundary, have a pop-out in front of the garage, it makes it look like it has an angle there, it really doesn't, but that's the proper doors on that.
It can be dark, I guess, second question, is it dark or light?
Well, also, this looks like it's got, you know, a lot more lines and-
Division in it than that one.
Division and siding, and it creates more mass in that image than that.
Good evening, Mark, from WHA. That was the only photo available online. We represented that model number. They have different variations as far as the breakups online, and shows the one that's in the first picture.
And Alex, would you go over the, so we know what materials are going where on the commons building?
Right. Well, starting from the base up, along the retail front edge and wrapping into the courtyard, this is a limestone sample, so that's, that's showing base material on El Camino elevation. This is a stucco sample. Stucco is probably the most prominent material on the building, but we do have accent areas. This is a semanticius panel, so that's the gray.
That's the inside, courtyard.
It's on the inside, isn't it?
It's in the courtyard, just around the door. So, that's the gray band at the third floor, fourth floor, for instance, in the courtyard. And then, the roof tile is a concrete tile. It's terracotta color, so it's like a terracotta roof. And then we have various wood details, stained wood trellises, this kind of color we're proposing on the retail entry doors, that they be mahogany with glass lights. Doors and windows are a composite material. This is representative of the paving in the courtyard.
Windows, windows are what, are they?
They're composite material. So, it's, it's not fiberglass, it's not metal, it's something that's called Fibrex Ultra. It's one of these manufactured materials. And this is indicative of the color, the darker gray. And then there's, in addition to that, there's some metal canopies that you can see on there. Yeah, metal at the retail level, and then the trellis, sunshades that are at the upper level are usually wood. And there's also canvas on it. Yes, here's the honey sample. That's pretty much the whole.
Okay, thank you. Malcolm?
You want to start with A and S first?
Huh?
You should be starting with everybody else, or I can go forward.
You, go ahead.
You know, we had the advantage of seeing this project come before us at A and S, and I have to agree with our, some of our members up here. There were a lot of neighbors who had come through, but I think from the beginning, the more, I think this project, the more, the concern at that time was more the access. And I have to say, this presentation even for A and S was amazingly done. When it came through with the building materials, with the renderings, with the drawings, it was, it was a very nice, clean project. Unfortunately, the access was not that nice and clean, and we had to work through it. But overall, I, I actually really liked the project. It's beautifully done. I like the division between the front and the back. I still have the concern that I had in A and S is, I know we talk about a lot about landscaping, but when I look at the site plan, and I'm thinking, okay, if I was buying one of those units in the back, I would love to have more landscaping, which, and I understand from the development side, that, you know, each unit is money, and we, they need to, they're allowed to put that. So, that's my only disappointment with the development, but otherwise, I, I love the courtyard. I think the, our, how we wanted commercial properties to be downtown, I know have been very different, but I think they still have taken that feel somewhat and brought it to El Camino. Just bringing in the retail, they, in the front, there's still tons of retail space. And I agree with Jeannie, they have improved the vitamin shop from our last meeting, which is great to see. It was otherwise on its own, and now it's all part of the project. But I love the way that they've got that retail space, but then they bring people in, even though they're going towards more residential field, in that courtyard, it's still a very much, you know, a more personal touch to it, and they, they're drawing people in away from El Camino. At the same time, they're connected with El Camino, and I think that's done beautifully. And then the second internal court, you know, for the residents, is spectacular. I, I, there are a few things I think we had gone through that, that I see have been improved, which has been the hardy panel color in the courtyard, which we had talked about in A and S, because we wanted to see some sort of a division, so that we don't have the mass, and they have done that. And I think the front elevation, what was bothering me last time was that it just was feeling too commercial, but with the way they have now treated the vitamin shop, it has actually tied everything together beautifully. I love the project, so that's my two cents.
You probably don't qualify for one of the below-market units, however.
Yeah, I'm just around the corner, so.
Ronnie?
So, my, my, my first comment's related to the colonnade. I really like the look and feel of it. I think it's light and bright and airy and open. I like all, a lot of the materials and the details and the pedestrian access. I appreciate that the parking is really hidden. It feels open and, you know, appropriately landscaped along this line that divides it from the gateway gardens. With respect to the gateway gardens, I don't know that it accompli, I, I don't get that same light, airy feeling from it, but I think it is appropriate and consistent with the character of the type of homes that we have in Los Altos. My only concern, and it's not really reflected on this one, but the other, can we pull up the other image that shows the backside with all the garages? If you could just put them side by side? Where the first front part really does a great job of, of hiding the parking or not accentuating it, or having it as, as, as not a part that really sort of stands out. When I look at this side, all I, you know, the whole bottom half, all I, all you sort draw your attention to are these garage doors. And I wonder if there's a way to soften that, because I believe that, that's what you're gonna see as you do this roundabout. I think it's great that they have worked with the neighbors. It sounds like they've had a very collaborative process. I assume that had the neighbors wanted this landscaped area along the Chester Circle wall, they probably would have done it. I think that, that would have been a nice addition, to have the same kind of division of landscape that you have between the colonnade and the gateway gardens, between-
Chester.
Chester and this parking circle. Because I think what you'll see is just this good neighbor fence, where you could have done a little bit more planting there, and I would like to see that. But I applaud them for getting through this process with, you know, absolutely no public comment.
Making it easy for them.
There was plenty of public comment, I believe.
Well, at this, what you have come to is something that is really accepted by the neighbors. And I applaud you for that.
Thank you. Ken?
I'm unfortunately biased, because I've spent a lot of time looking at this project. I, I think it's absolutely terrific. I think it's going to be one of the real signature pieces in Los Altos. It's going to, I think, be right up there with the Packard Foundation as far as being an important architectural landmark in, in Los Altos. I think it's an absolutely brilliant design to cut the property in, in two parts and divide it the way they've done it. And each part, although they're quite different, I think, has been really thoughtfully developed. They've done a terrific job in dealing with the issues with the neighbors. The initial problems with Chester Circle just, just got solved. Jeff came up afterwards, and we had a little, quick little conversation, and basically it was done. And I, I think the combination of working with these folks, how responsive they've been, and the eventual outcome is, has been one of the best experiences I've had on a planning commission. I think it's really gonna be outstanding.
Thank you. Jeannie?
Yes, being the third member of A and S and having seen this, again, I think you guys have done a spectacular job, and I truly do appreciate how responsive and how positive you've been throughout this. I think a lot of times when you're here, you've gone, you know, back to A and S three times. You can imagine that. It's not feeling really good, but you guys have, I just, been really good sports about the entire thing. And I think we have a very high-quality project here. It would have been so easy to look at something like this and try and go, I'll use a new term in my vocabulary, be matchy-matchy, you know, and have the front half and the back half. But, you know, I just still, I still love the transition for what you've gotten on the El Camino side, and that whole invitation in, and I do believe it goes with that whole vision of the boulevard. And then that transition in the back to really where you're meeting up with the residents-
And then that transition in the back to really where you're meeting up with the residential, I think you guys have done a spectacular job. So most of my comments are the same as my two other A and S members up here. The one thing that I would want to ask a question about is, we're asking the applicant, you know, to put this $100,000 down in case, you know, in terms of, for corrective action in terms of, you know, traffic impacts and crosswalks, et cetera. And I'm just wondering, is there something, and would it be appropriate in terms of trying to put in some sort of trigger mechanism in there, in terms of when we would take a look, take a snapshot of it? Because the thing is, is sometimes we don't, as a city, we don't do anything until there's some big thing that prompts that action. And I, I'm just wondering if there's something, even if something as simple as doing another one of these counts out there, you know, once the project is 100%, you know, occupied, you know, or some, within some timeframe after that, so that we can do a preemptive or a, you know, do something before it becomes a major problem and difficulty for the town. So that'd be the question.
It's shown up on our CIP. It is something that the area staff is very, it's a project for us, it's not on the books in terms of capital improvement. So if the commission wanted to provide some, some recommendation, staff.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we should be putting a project on the, the project itself on the book, but just some sort of trigger that would allow us a preemptive, you know, let's take the pulse, see how it's going, and, and everything's fine, then, you know, again, just let it go slip into our standard processes. But, again, just a thought in terms of the preemptive strike kind of thing.
Mike?
I just have to compliment you on, on just a spectacular development. I think this is, this is truly an asset for, for Los Altos. Looks like you've done everything asked of you. You've, you've dealt with the neighbors and addressed their issues. I think that's, that's, that's just terrific. And congratulations, you've got a first-class project. Thank you.
Okay. So let me, let me offer a couple of comments. First of all, to me, the takeaway on this is not that you've had three meetings and you finally got through it, A and S and Planning Commission. The fact is that you had three meetings and you made changes. And, and you listened. And my fellow commissioners are grateful for that, and I am grateful for that as well. Because it's, it serves the community and the applicant and the process well when people are, there's dialogue, there's movement, and, and there's change to address that. And, and I, I thank you for that. It makes our job a lot easier. In five and a half years on the Planning Commission, I think this is the first commercial project where I've had no public comment. It's a new record. I've said to people many a time that, you know, the political process rarely creates the best projects. It creates compromised projects. And, you know, I would say on balance, this is pretty good. It's, 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 it's hard in the process to get it the best. You know, all things being equal, I would have liked to see more retail. I mean, I understand the challenges of the site. I think the, on the commons project, that parking may turn into an issue, guess parking. But that's, again, we are, for better or worse, dictated by state law, not by Los Altos regulations with regard to how much parking gets provided. And there's nothing we can do or nothing that the applicant can do about that. The reality is, we're going to have more traffic, generally in Los Altos. This project will add to it. I don't think it will unduly add to it, but we are going as a community to see more traffic. And I think we just have to acknowledge that. My last comment really is, is, is for staff, which is that I'm, in this case, I, I see the reason and rationale for yielding on the setback, the rear setback. But I think it's a really bad precedent to have, where we take from a neighbor to give for below-market rate housing. I, I have a real tough time with that. We're taking from an individual homeowner, and it's for the community benefit, and I don't, I, that, that to me is a taking. The fact that it works in this particular case, so be it. But to me, that, that's not a good thing for us as a community to be doing. And I may be a lone voice in that, but
Do you want me to comment?
I, I think that, that we need to, we need to respect property owners' rights.
I can comment to that. Under the state density bonus law, they, if they provide affordable housing, they do get incentives, development incentives, and that can require, that can be reduced parking, that can be reduced setbacks, that can be the development incentives that the applicant requests. And it is preempted, and it is a shell, and that is the reward for development of affordable housing.
And I am absolutely in favor of affordable housing. I am absolutely in favor of development incentives, but I am not in favor of development incentives. And, and this is, again, it's not reflected of this project per se, but in general, development incentives that wind up being a taking from an individual property owner, a neighboring property owner. It's, it's impinging, it's impinging on a neighboring property owner.
What exactly are you referring to? I'm, I'm confused. We're, we're looking at essentially the side of some buildings.
Ken, my point is, in this project, it, it's fine. All I'm saying is, for, for my, my feedback to staff, whether staff chooses to ignore me or not is staff's prerogative, but as a conceptual process, I'm, I'm having difficulty. It doesn't apply to this particular project. I understand why in this project it makes sense, but as a general rule, I'm saying that's not something that I think is a good trade-off for us as a community. Okay? So it's, this, it is, you know, it, it is not specific to this project. I, I am voting for this project. I understand the, the trade-off in this project. I'm saying as a general rule.
I, I just don't even think it's a trade-off in this project. I think it's a, I think it's a non, a complete non-issue.
In this project, I agree with you.
Okay.
Okay.
So are we, is this mountains out of molehills, or what are we doing here?
We're making molehills out of molehills.
Yeah, no.
Okay. So we have a number of things that we need to approve here. And David or Jolie, would you like us, how would you like us to approve these? Assuming that we're going to do so?
Yes, I would make a motion to recommend and approve the mitigated negative deck first, and then a separate motion on the rest of it, the design review, use permit, and map. You can, you can glom all those together, but I'd make a separate motion for the record on the negative deck. And I'd say you, you're recommending that the city council approve.
All right, so would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll take the short-winded one. Recommend approval of the mitigated negative deck of environmental impact.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, pass of six, nothing. The next is a motion for design review, use permit subdivision application.
All three in one.
Somebody like to make a motion?
I've got it in front of me, I'll do it again. Recommend approval of the design review, use permit, and subdivision application 10D06, 10UP05, and 10SD01 to the city council, subject to the findings and conditions of approval.
And condition number nine, is that 16 or 17 units? Just get that clear. Is it 16 or 17?
Right, I think it's 16. Is that correct?
Yeah, because it's in 17 in your materials, but it's 16? Just one way or another, is it?
It's 16.
17 total.
But it's 16 and 9.
Oh, because one's, one's below.
Okay, so with, with the amendment to item 9 being 16, and to item 27, make sure it says $100,000.
And I'll second that. Okay.
Not, not 100? Yes.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass of six, nothing.
This is a record.
Thank you. Good luck with your project.
Thank you very, very much. And also, I want, you know, I'd also like to thank Kathy Kleinbaum for the good job, great job in terms of the economic analysis and such that was presented to us as well. Greatly appreciate that.
And also thank you to staff for cleaning up this project so much that by the time it got to us, it wasn't that bad.
And yes, and thanking staff because it's given me a tremendous workout of my arms, lifting these various assorted handouts. Okay, so I'm going to suggest that we take a short recess, reconvene at 9:00 PM, and we will cover the remaining items.
Major portions of the state of Oregon were denuded.
Just the changes.
Just like five.
Generate the paper.[1279.21]
Generate the paper.
We're gonna reconvene, please. We stay on our schedule. So we are back on public hearings, item number two, capital improvement program, and we have a staff report, please.
Yes, this is our annual review of the capital improvement program. We're required by state law to review the city's capital program to make sure it's consistent with our general plan. And what I've done with this report is, since we, there haven't been a great many of changes to the CIP since the last time we reviewed it, I just really focused on the changes. And so what this report did is identified those new capital improvement projects and the general plan elements that support them. These are projects
that staff has been working on and directed by council in most cases to prioritize and develop. So we're recommending that you find that these are consistent with the general plan. If there's any questions? Are you looking for comments on the specifics of what's included, or what are you willing
At the core, I'd like a motion that they meet the general plan. Certainly if you had comments about individual projects, we could forward, this would be an opportunity to make those in terms of whether you thought it was inconsistent with the plan, or should be a lower priority, or should be a higher priority. And these are in the CIP, they're not prioritized necessarily, but these are projects that are showing up in the budget cycle right now.
David, I'd like to know if the sewer main video is going to be on...
No, no, no. On the website?
Is it gonna be like on iTunes? Can I rent it or anything?
It will be on YouTube.
Some cities or sanitary districts, you know, because the infrastructure is so bad, they actually have a TV and they show their whole roots and grass and whatever, you know, where pipes are just gone. They do put that on their website because it's really educational, because when you say we need this master plan because no one can see the pipes, and everybody says, oh, we're paying these sewer fees, why do we pay these sewer fees? Well, below ground, there are to be pipes that are fifteen or a hundred years old, and actually, the videos are fascinating.
Yeah, Jolie, I'm told that they're really crappy videos.
John, I had a question about one of the specific items.
Yes, please.
For the record, I have not gotten any speeding tickets by radar in Los Altos, but looking at the Speed Zone survey, it says...
Are you saying that the radar is not accurate, that you are speeding and you're not getting it?
No, I have no problem with the radars, but it says that in order to justify, in order to enforce by radar, this study needs to be done every five to seven years. I noted that they're doing it exactly on the five-year mark, and I was just wondering if, you know, in a twenty-year period, you do it every time on the five-year mark, you're gonna pay for it four times, versus if you do it on the seven-year mark, you're gonna pay for it three times, saving sixty thousand. So why did that come about?
I think I can explain our timing on that. We have a speed enforcement, we have a speeding problem in the community, and we have an enforcement problem. And it's not that we can't go out there and catch them with the radars, it's that our radar surveys have to coincide with the actual speed surveys. And so we have some streets where we need to redo the survey to justify our radar ticketing on them. So this is actually what will help us ticket, which will, I think, help solve the problem we have.
If our surveys aren't updated and the surveys aren't done and if they're not updated, then you have corridors on the ticket.
Right, and that happened on El Monte. So they were really enforcing them on El Monte, and El Monte is a constant problem, since I happen to live off of El Monte. And absolutely, if they don't get the data from the surveys, the judges will not uphold the tickets. So it's just, it's real simple. So you've just gotta do it.
So staying with this one, are there specific streets? Is this a citywide survey? Are they targeting specific streets? Do you know?
I don't know.
Okay, because my further question is, I would like to understand how the, doing the survey and all relates to, and I didn't see it on here, but this whole traffic calming plan that we now have and projects, I don't see any of the projects listed on here. Is that because we don't have purview of that list, or is it one of the same?
Those are already in the CIP, and they've already been found to be consistent with the general plan. So what we're looking at are new projects since last year.
Okay. So on that one, I guess, you know, you mentioned in terms of priorities and all, I guess I would look at that that one probably needs to be, I don't know how we staged that one, but given that the city is gonna be spending money potentially on roundabouts on Fremont Avenue, that it seems to me that having the survey data available, because right now we're gonna be spending money on traffic calming solution based on five-year, five-plus-year data, and particularly on a street that has already had some stuff done within that last five years, so we don't really have an understanding of the impact of the changes that were already made. So I just, in terms of, you know, spending money, it just seems like this should kind of be, if we're gonna do it, should remain a high priority relative to what else is already there for traffic calming.
So you're saying the Speed Zone survey should remain a high priority, or the traffic calming?
Well, I have a hard time supporting the traffic calming, I think for us to be effective in our expenditure of city funds for traffic calming, I think we need to be validating that we know what the speed survey results actually are. Okay, because I think it's more than just our ability to use radar. I think it's effective expenditure of city funds in traffic calming. I think we owe it to ourselves to validate. I had comments on a couple of others.
Well, right now, I just want questions of staff, and then I need to open up public comment. So if you have questions, any further questions of staff? Okay, so I'm gonna open public comment. Anybody like to comment? I see nobody responding. So I'm going to close public comment, and now I'd be happy to open it up for further questions of staff or comments. So Mike, would you like to start?
I have no, I have no comments.
Okay. Jeanne?
Yeah, just so, in terms of the timeframe and all, so the First Street improvements, Phase One B, that would imply then that if it's supposed to coincide with Safeway, that would be happening sometime between January thirteenth and November, January two thousand thirteen and November two thousand thirteen, correct? Am I interpreting that correctly?
Yes, we're trying to phase that so that we can coincide with the Safeway development.
Okay, and so does that mean that the Safeway development is happening, because one C, I lost it, one C, which is what is coordinated with Randy Lamb's project, does that mean that, that we're expecting that one to lag behind the Safeway development project?
The idea is to work down the street, and Safeway, and the traffic management plan for the Randy Lamb project is limited in terms of their construction access to Edith, using Edith in first, not coming down from Maine. So what our thought is, is that the program just works, works westward, if you will, down the street.
Yeah, but I guess the description reads, "The project is intended to coincide with the redevelopment of the former post office site occurring on the southern side of First Street." So if that is, if that is in our two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, does that, will that still allow us to meet the description saying that it is intended to coincide? Because I would say that Randy Lamb's project would not be happening until the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen timeframe. So I guess my question is, is that one properly placed where it is versus is it really, I know we want to move down, so either the description should change so it's not tied to Randy Lamb's project, or if it's tied to Randy Lamb's project, do we have it on the right-year boundary? So that's the question.
And I'm not sure if the description really ties our hands in that, but I'll raise that with the city manager about, I mean, that is our intent, that we don't do this work and have the developers undo it. And the developers are responsible for a great deal of the work.
Well, I mean, clearly I see the advantage of us doing it simultaneously. I think it would be probably more cost-effective for both parts to do it simultaneously. But I didn't know what, in this particular case, what would take precedent trying to, you know, I mean, if Safeway and Randy's project were developing at the exact same time, we're probably already shutting down First Street, you know, in some ways. So would we, so again, I just, that seems to be a timing issue, so I was kind of questioning what the timing issue is and what is the right position for that, or the right connection, sanity versus coordination versus who knows what else.
You may be overthinking this, Jean.
I'm sorry, but you know what? Look at this stuff. And the parking management, again, you said there's no implied priority, but I would hope that the parking management is a high priority. And then one last question, is on the description of the parking management plan, could you translate what, maybe it's just me, what the last part of that, the end sentence says? And we'll also examine opportunities to create a potential reserve of surplus parking spaces to be available to, my question is, facilitate the future redevelopment in the downtown. Is that future redevelopment, or is it available to facilitate redevelopment? I don't know, the word future, I didn't know what that implies versus available to facilitate redevelopment in the downtown core.
In that, I think it's just trying to say that redevelopment will happen independent of this, it's just this will benefit potentially some of the future redevelopment, if we can find a surplus and decide to dole that out to redevelopment. So I'm not sure that that, the semantics...
I'm not sure we should get too deeply involved in the semantics here.
Oh, wait, are you anti-Semitic? I am indeed. I can see that.
The second sentence, must be, must be. You are awfully tired.
Okay.
I just have a follow-up question about that parking management plan, just so that I understand it. Is it that they are going to look for the surplus? You know, I remember in discussions, we talked about how you, where you place the dots that the city employees, and how you repaint lines, or are they going to say you could create more spaces by repainting the dots or repainting the lines, and then that's another study plan for another year?
It could lead to other studies, but we're, I think we're gonna take a broad brush and look at...
The goal is to find spots.
We're gonna look at whether we should look at timing, placement of certain spaces, whether we should redistribute the landscape perhaps to get more spaces.
Will they consider proposals for in-loo type arrangements?
Yes, I think once we develop, once we figure out whether we have a surplus, then the idea is to decide whether it's enough to offer as...
So then the second part of the question is, not just looking at the space that we have and seeing how we can fit more in that space, but how we can create additional space, bigger projects related to parking. Is that part of this?
Yeah, it's how we can manage our existing parking supply. I think that's the primary...
The existing supply as opposed to creating new supply.
But the study, I thought the study is written broader than that. I mean, it's starting by surveying what we have and then determining if there's a surplus or a deficiency, and then how to address what we, what's discovered. So if we discover we have a surplus, then it won't go into the others, but if we discover we have a death deficiency, then it would go further.
Right. So my hope is that we'd be more forward-looking, and not just what do we need right now, but what can we do to help development in the future by creating some sort of in-loop program?
But don't we have that study kind of on and off happening, and hasn't really moved forward? So I don't know if it's gonna be connected with this parking management plan. I mean, it's parking management, management is more what you have. So I'm trying to see, I mean, is it going to be broader than that, that it is gonna go through and look at future...
You're talking about the downtown parking plan of...
Yeah, but I'm just saying this, we're looking at...
The project is defined and approved by council, it's just a matter of getting it into the CIP.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, this is saying parking management plan, so this is more what we have currently on ground. Or is what Jeanne is saying that it's gonna be more...
It's both.
Both, okay.
So look at what we have and see if there's a way we can manage it better.
Manage it better.
Okay.
Manage it more better.
More better.
Okay. Ken, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I was, I'm sort of confused about this main library parking lot. It's not a whole lot of money, but I'm just wondering why they want to do that.
The problem is, there is the entrance to the driveway, the driveway off of San Antonio. People are coming in there pretty fast, and other people are backing out. There tends to be a lot of conflict right there. And so it's to make it safer. That's the primary objective there.
Okay.
I know there's been some discussions about the Civic Center master plan, and solving it anyway with that, but given that, the bond issue, it's probably more important now to tackle this. It's been a longstanding problem.
Okay. Somehow, I got the wrong idea. I was thinking it was on the other side of the parking lot, the, you know, the car barn theater side, not the San Antonio side. So okay, I understand.
That's a book with a different cover. Raine?
Yeah, I take my girls to the library, and I know that's a huge, huge issue. And also, crossing, you know, families and kids are just crossing over to go into their cars. There's no really formal crosswalk there, and that is an issue. So I'm happy to see this here. I have no other really comments on this.
So I've got a couple of comments. One is, I wish we would spend less money on parking studies and more money on fixing the problem. You know, we had the Downtown Traffic Committee, and we looked at parking garages. Now we're looking at parking management. You know, we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on studies, and I would rather see that money go to something literally concrete, as in, you know, more parking spaces somehow, or parking structures. And so I hope we get out of this study-to-death mode. My comment on the First Street Improvement is, I would hope that...
And so it's to make it safer. It's the primary objective there.
Okay.
I know there's been some discussions about the Civic Center master plan, and solving it anyway with that, but.
Yeah.
Given, given that.
Yeah.
The bond issue, it's probably more important now to tackle this.
Okay.
It's been a longstanding problem.
Okay. Somehow, I got the wrong idea. I was thinking it was on the other side of the parking lot, the, you know, the car barn theater side, not the San Antonio side. So, okay, I understand.
That's a book of a different cover. Roneen? Nothing?
Yeah, I, I take my girls to the library, and I know that's a huge, huge issue. And also crossing, you know, families and kids are just crossing over to go into their cars. There's no really formal crosswalk there, and that is an issue. So I, I'm happy to see this here. I have no other really comments on this.
So I've got a couple of comments. One is, I wish we would spend less money on parking studies and more money on fixing the problem. You know, we, we had the downtown traffic committee, and we looked at parking garages. Now we're looking at parking management. You know, we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on studies, and I would rather see that money go to something literally concrete, as in, you know, more parking spaces somehow, or parking structures. And so I hope we get out of this study-to-death mode. My comment on the First Street improvement is, I would hope that before we proceed with the second phase of the First Street, that we look critically at how well what we've done so far is working and what lessons we've learned, particularly about impact on businesses and the gotchas, and what can go wrong and does go wrong. And so I think, you know, I would hate to see us blindly going forward without at least saying, you know, did what we do work, and should we be doing and looking at it differently? Maybe we, we don't need to, but I hope it's not a blind charge forward.
Actually, we're, we're doing that. There's, there were definitely impacts to businesses, you know, ways to minimize that. Our plan is to keep the street open, and that's, that's our task, and that's, that's our goal. And the, the other lessons that we're learning are how to manage the project better. And we went through a few different contractors, a few different project managers, and I think there's some lessons we learned in terms of that. The later phases, I think we're much.
David, have we, have we determined when the Safeway project is going to start?
Uh, we, we have.
Mike?
Yeah.
Um, your microphone. Mike, your mic.
And the answer is?
Before winter. Before winter.
I spoke with a, with a representative of Safeway. They are busily working, did you solve the mystery? They, they are busily working on their detailed construction drawings and such. Their goal is to break ground January of 2013, and to start the construction then, and to have it completed by the holidays, which is November of 2013.
Okay.
So that is what they're working towards, barring no unforeseen problems going forward.
Okay.
Can we go back to the First Street design? Because I know you said the, the second phase, but actually, when I look at this, can, there's phase, we implemented Phase 1A, then this talks about B and C are in red ink, and then they're still in black ink. First Street Design Phase 2. Could you, a brief, what is that?
That's the leg between Main Street and San Antonio.
Ah, that's Phase 2.
That part of First Street, we forget about them.
Well, I just, I just drew a blank in terms of, okay, A, B, C, I get that. What is 2? Okay, so 2 is, okay, got it. That was easy.
Okay. So I think, David, you've got a lot of comment. What would you like as well? Anything else? Motion?
Motion.
Okay. So would somebody like, I would entertain a motion?
Like a motion that we accept the capital improvement program?
I'll second that.
Okay, we're recommending approval to council of the, the capital program. Is that the motion?
That's the motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Passes six, nothing. Next is commission reports and direction on future agenda items. Board of adjustments has not met in.
Years.
Years. A and S, you guys have been busy.
Yeah.
We had another exciting evening yesterday. We, one house that was back for its third time, finally.
Was it the charm?
It was the charm. It's a very unusual quasi-bizarre house, which I think between Malka and Jean, they beat the poor architect into submission, and he finally made enough changes to make everybody happy. So that got passed. There was another house that got, went right through. And then we had a fairly long, drawn-out discussion about 400 First Street, Main Street, 400 Main Street, which is at the corner of First and Main. Presently a corral, but hopefully a building at some point. And it did not pass. And I think all three of us were in agreement that it had some problems with the way the site had been laid out by the architect and the developer. And so we asked that this whole group, or he actually asked, we, we said that we wanted to review it again, that we thought a work session was, study session was appropriate. He was a little bit reluctant, kind of the other end of the spectrum from tonight's developer, interestingly enough. But finally kind of agreed to that, and then he said he wanted the entire planning commission to weigh in on it.
Yeah, but we gave him two options.
Yeah.
We gave him options that either he can have the A and S only, or have the entire planning commission be present for the study session.
So he wanted the entire planning commission, which was fine. So the rest of you will have the opportunity to weigh in on it.
It's coming in front of us on June 7th.
June 7th.
So that'll be part of our regularly.
No.
That will be the regularly scheduled meeting.
That will be the regularly scheduled planning commission meeting.
Right.
Will, David, will that be the only agenda item for that meeting?
We requested that of David. I don't know if he'll agree to it.
He was going to look at his calendar.
So I haven't had a chance to.
You, you have, you have an urgency, we have an urgency matter that's, I think, now on June 7th.
Which is what?
Which is the payday lenders. Isn't, is that correct? I believe that.
It's not urgency, it's just the regular.
Right, but it's, I believe it got noticed.
Wait, I'm only going to get my checks cashed.
Yeah, yeah. It got noticed for the 7th minute ago, long of the council.
Okay, so.
And we have 90 days to more.
Right, so that is going to be on the agenda, so.
And we did request a minimum of an hour, right?
Well, it has to be more than an hour.
Yeah.
It's going to be way more than an hour.
To be productive.
Well, David had, I mean, David last night had suggested that, you know, either we could, but again, he has to look at the calendar, but the options were to do it during our regular planning commission meeting, or to do it in, like, an hour, as a study session, an hour in advance of or after our planning commission meeting, but that he was looking at some degrees of flexibility, and that he was going to discuss it with the chair to get it scheduled.
So it seems to me that the, the easy thing might be, hmm, that other meeting has been noticed. I'm wondering, do we have the option, starting at, say, 7:00?
You can start. At 7:00, the regular planning commission, because you've noticed the pay is.
That's, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, pay day.
Okay.
Yeah, but that forces that payday, we need to start at 7:00. We can't start in advance at 7:30.
So basically, what you're saying is if it's at 7:30, then after that, we have our study session?
Right, okay.
So how would you envision the payday or incentive happening?
The other, the other, the only other thing I was going to point out on that is the, when we made the motion, we said there were two aspects of it that we wanted to cover, so I don't know if that, you know, if we break it up into two pieces, one before and one after, but.
You know, it just depends on how long the meeting goes, you know?
Okay, so.
No, you shouldn't break it.
Give, give staff and myself the luxury of, of working out the details.
You guys figuring it out.
If, if that's all right.
Yes, of course it's all right.
I, I don't think we have a lot of degrees of freedom on that. So that's the, the A and S report. Anybody attend a council meeting as of late?
I did. There were two issues that came up that, they were specific to planning commission. The first was reorganizing, and they discussed that they wanted clarity on this two-meeting idea, and had asked me about it, and I explained to them, I think, what the majority position was, and what we were trying to accomplish in breaking up an agenda, where we have big issues that we don't want to try to jam into one. And then the second issue that came up that will be coming before us, Councilmember Packard made a motion that we reconsider, he had been, I'll just give you the background that he gave. He has been on the, you might have read about this in the paper, the commissions that have come up with the new zoning ordinances over the last few years in terms of height and, particularly in the downtown area. And he thought that perhaps we had gone, the city had gone too far in terms of allowing three-story buildings, and he wanted to be clear that his position was that we should only allow two-story buildings within the confines of, what was it, David? It was the, what's it?
CRS.
The CRS.
CRS.
Right. But it also revolved around the fact that with development incentives, there might be a, a push to, to expand because of the fact that you need to give development incentives, that you might push beyond the, the height and story limit that currently exists in CRS. Wasn't that, I believe that was an element of it. Is that correct, David?
We wanted some certainty in the development incentives.
And then there was comment, and then discussion among other council members. I think of the public comments that I recall, I think four or five people spoke. They were all in favor, I, I don't recall anyone saying they wanted two stories to the limit, as a limit, but there were a couple of comments that I recall, Passaral and another architect that were saying that there is a benefit to form architecture, where you have form-based architecture, where you have a height limit, and you allow the architect discretion to fit what they can in that space. There was, there was a division on the council on the issue. There was a vote, 3-2, to recommend that we limit buildings to two stories, and that that come before the planning commission for a full review, public comment, and process.
And so, Jolie, that means, have you written up a revision?
Oh, one more thing. It will not affect current projects, and.
Actually, James has already drafted some, it might, I'll send you some. So it will be coming to you shortly.
Okay, so be coming to us for either a.
Well, it's something that hasn't been noticed.
So, so it'll come to us for either a recommended approval, denial, or, or modified approval, right? I mean, it'll come to us in one form or another. Is that correct?
Yeah, hopefully, yeah, probably the 21st, maybe.
Okay.
Just to have the notice.
Thank you. Any other competent business that's come before?
I, I just have a question, and I don't know if it even, there's something we can do about it. The school across the street from my house, and I think I had brought this up a while ago, I really have a concern about the parents crossing when they park on this side of the street, which I have absolutely no problem. In fact, I keep telling some of them that, hey, you know, rather than taking your kids out, because when you're turning from San Antonio onto Portola, because our house is at the corner, it's, it's not that safe, because sometimes you just don't see when you're turning in, regardless how visible it is. And, you know, parents are putting their kids in the cars from the street side, because there's absolutely nothing on our side where they can stand or put the kids and, you know, along between our property and the other property. We have all these shrubs and whatever. I have a major concern about all these parents. I know we have a sidewalk down next to the signal, but we have, and then we have another one close to Egan, but there's nothing in the middle, and people cross right where that entrance is into Bullis, and, and I think it's, it's something we should look at before something happens there. And there are very little kids, you know, from Bullis coming out, and parents cross over because that's where they're parking, and they'll just put the kids in. I don't know if there's something we can do. I mean, on our side of the property, we are actually going to go ahead and see if the city would allow us to put some stepping stones or something so people can actually stand and put their kids in. I don't like it, because now I'll have to remove all that bushes, and we'll see the garbage can sitting right there, but I think we need to do something to make it comfortable for these, nobody's going to stop from parking there, and nobody's going to stop from crossing over. I don't know if that's something that is worth looking at or not, but I just see it, it doesn't affect too many blocks, but it does affect all the way to Egan, where people are just crossing over.
The good news is that by 2014, that problem will go away.
Yeah, but till 2014.
No, no, no. I mean, it's, my, my point is, there's a two-year window, and that will continue to be an issue, based on what I know currently.
I think you just give staff some direction, and they can report back.
Yeah, but what I want to know from fellow commissioners is, is that something, you know, I don't want to just give staff something to do and waste their time. Is this something which is worth for all of us to look at or not?
Well, you know, I, I kind of was under the impression that we have something going, some project or something that is happening, that, dealing with the traffic situation on Portola, I thought it was a live project somewhere in the pipe or something, so maybe for some reason, no, I don't, I think there's a new live one in there somewhere, but I was thinking, if David, if David can report back on what, if anything, is going on, and.
We'll look through our Safe Route specific projects.
Because I know they did a lot of work already, just recently, on those two crosswalks.
Maybe the staff could just be there during the end of school and just observe what's going on.
It's like the morning rush hour.
Morning rush.
When they're picking up the kids.
We'll certainly view it with the traffic engineer, but we don't have one yet.
Or if you can just let us know in the next meeting that if there is anything on the pipeline, I think it's worth looking.
Are we going to get, are we going to get a traffic engineer?
We are hiring a, a transportation manager who may or may not be a traffic engineer. Depends on who we, who we actually hire. We're doing the interviews right now, and they're, they're making offers and stuff. So, I was on the panel, actually, but I, I don't know who will actually make the contact, so I can't say that we have an engineer or not.
That's okay.
So this is our second attempt at filling a position, right? Okay, okay.
So I think we've got, we've survived a candidate.
You're trying to green-light it through the process, I guess.
Thank you, Ken. Any other comment, future agenda items? If not, I'm going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
Good job.
Good job.